Okay, I'd like to call the meeting in to order of the Governance Committee at 5:05 PM. Thank you guys for coming. It is great to see you. Before we start, I just want to remind everyone of our dialogue framework. Number one, participate. You're here because you have good ideas that we all need, we need to hear them. And all of our conversations should be open and honest, but also respectful. And we listen first and then respond to the topic, not the individual, and just be open to all the wonderful things that we're going to be hearing. As we move through our agenda, I'd like to ask you to look at the minutes of our last meeting, May 4th, and if I can get a motion to accept them or add changes or deletions or corrections.
I guess I'll move even though they're my minutes.
Okay. Do we have a second, Tom? If you're on mute, I can't hear you. Okay, I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye. And anyone opposed? Any abstains, abstentious? Okay, then the minutes have been approved. I don't see any anyone from the public for public comment. If I'm in error, please speak up. Then we'll move on to our unfinished business, which is our unattended children's policy. We had a couple of responses. Thank you, Jennifer. Some good responses. Greg had a response also. Any well, before we get there, we should probably have a motion to to approve the to approve the policy before we discuss it. And Jennifer, it looks like you're up again.
Okay, okay. I'm I'll move a subject. Well, can I subject to discussion and some amendment?
Right, because after we we approve and get a second, then we have a discussion if memory serves me right. So you just need a second. Okay, Greg, I didn't see you. Thank you. So now we have now we have discussion. Jennifer, would you like to start?
Yes, let me. I have a copy of this up. So I was looking at it more deeply. Sorry to do it on the second view, but it seems like sometimes it takes a couple of views to really get into it. And I saw that the in the second, the beginning of the second paragraph where it lists the general statute that that really applies only to number one, because it's for children under 12. So I was wondering if that could be moved closer to number one, right? Right now, the structure makes it look like it applies to everything else that follows. And as I was looking at that, I was wondering if it might be better to just rearrange the wording and have the sections listed by age. And then it made me realize that it seems that some of the the topics in two and three only apply to a certain age range. I believe it might be 12 or 15 to 15, and that made me wonder if children 15 and older are not covered under this, even if they are waiting for a ride or if they still are. And then I was wondering what the upper limit of unattended children are, if it goes only up to 15, or if children 15 to 18 are still considered to be under their parents, the responsibility of their parents, if they happen to have behavior that's not appropriate. So those are my questions.
So Greg, you had some responses that maybe speak to a bit of that?
Yeah, I did. I I I put it basically in I have one serious or one important point, I think. And oh, thank you. There it is. And then the rest I was just just, you know, copy editing it as I thought was a good idea. But the the serious, the serious thing is that I couldn't understand the need for 30 minutes before closing time. I guess it has to do with the age ranges, as Jennifer said. But I mean, if if there's somebody there who's under 12 at any time, day or night, near closing time or not near closing time, that's a violation of the policy, and we're going to be calling a caregiver. So I didn't understand why there'd be like a caregiver should show up or pick up a child 30 minutes before closing time, because presumably the caregiver would be there. Our policy is that a caregiver has to be with an under 12 child at all times. So if you find a child under 12, if a staff member finds a child under 12 unsupervised at any time of day or night, then they start the calling procedure. So I couldn't understand the need or a special one regarding 30 minutes beforehand, if the caregiver is already there. And if the if the child is is 12 years old or over, I, you know, do we mean that a caregiver has to pick up that person? That if the child is 12 years old or over, they don't have to have a caregiver on site. As I read the policy anyway, I think it means so. Does that mean that if somebody's 12 to 15, and it's 30 minutes before closing time, we got to try to reach a caregiver offsite? Get a come in. I would think that if somebody's 12, 13, 14, or 15, they could just be put out like everybody else at closing time without any effort by staff concerning caregivers. Anyway, those were the how much how closely that matches up with what Jennifer was thinking. I'm not sure, but that's what I thought.
Brandy, do you have any comments on both of those?
Well, there was quite a lot of territory covered there, so it would be helpful to me to cover one concern at a time. So if we start from the reverse and what Greg is talking about, let me just find the location of that here. So this is essentially you are suggesting that we remove the entirety of number three. Is that right, Greg?
I think so. If if children means, you know, minors.
I'm just reading back through it for a moment, so bear with me.
So I think, Greg, if I'm understanding you, there should be no child in the library unattended who's under the age of 12. And they can be attended legally, not legally, but according to this policy by anyone over 12. And if they are someone over 12, then they are just then that over 12 person, that caregiver is responsible, not the library.
The caregiver has to be 15, at least 15.
Or over, yeah. But but your point is well taken, that if a child is under 12, their caretaker should be with them. And if they're over 12, then then they should be able to get home themselves. I can't speak to what Jen's response to this would be. I did send your feedback to her, Greg, to ask if she had any concerns, and she said that none were readily apparent to her, but she was away from the office at Crystal Lake preparing for a program, so I don't know how thoroughly she was able to to go through your points.
Want to add my apology for being a last minute Larry.
I she did so that you did open the email with that. She said she had no concerns. Essentially, I'm interested in moving this policy forward because she was concerned about having it in place for summer reading, which starts today. So Ramona, do you have any objection to removing this language?
I don't. And I agree with Greg. It is, well, number one, for section three, caregivers must pick up children at least 30 minutes before closing time. I mean, even if we left that in there, what's the or else? You know, I mean, what is there? You must pick up your kids 30 minutes before closing time or else what? You know, so are we going to go around at, you know, 7:30 PM?
Is Ramona frozen or am I frozen?
I think I'm probably frozen.
No, I can I can hear you.
Okay.
I just got that my connection is unstable, so it's being.
Okay. So we're not going to go around at 7:30 PM and, you know, boot out all the kids or, you know, force them to to call a caregiver or, you know, and it's true, if we are saying you have to be at least 12 years of age or have someone who's 15 or older as your caregiver, then it does it does sort of negate the caregivers must pick up children because they theoretically already have a caregiver with them. And what do we do then if, I'm not talking about closing time, but what do we do if it's just the middle of the day? And we've got a child who is unattended. Do we do we call? You know, do we try to locate the caregiver, the parent? Do we call the police? You know, in that second bullet point and number three, that's what we say, we said we were going to do a closing time, but theoretically, that would potentially apply to any situation where we have an under 12 unattended.
I'd like to ask a question. What happens if children are 12, 13, and 14 years old? Is that different? I think that's what I thought Jennifer was trying to get at.
It can be a little, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Just curious.
They can be alone, but they can't be the caretaker for an under 12 child.
So they would not be considered unattended?
Right.
I guess I could. The reason I raised that was I could see for that age, they may, if they live too far away, they would have to call for someone who might not arrive on time. And I could see if I was the children's librarian, I would not maybe not want to leave them on the street alone when I left. But theoretically, I guess one could. So I could see that being a gray area possibly.
Right. I mean, you know, it leaves it open, though I will say the caregivers must pick up children at least 30 minutes before closing time. For me, it seems like that would leave it open to too much interpretation. You might have, you know, someone, you know, potentially on the staff who is really kind of hardline about it and, you know, really enforces it. And and somebody else might say, well, you know, if your dad's going to be here and, you know, a quarter of, then that's that's fine. And, you know, no problem. And are we gonna, you know, shame or yell at some parents for not picking up their kids 30 minutes before closing, but not others? And so.
So if I have an eight year old child and I send my 14 year, this 14 year old brother to watch the child.
So to be 15.
Well, but I could just leave the for what that the for the 14 year old would be okay. It's the that's the eight year old that doesn't have a caregiver. Now, okay, so I can see how that can be confusing. And I, you know, if you're 12 and younger, I mean, if you're under 12, you have to be with someone.
Yeah.
And if you are over 12, you, well, if you're 12, 13, or 14, you cannot be a caregiver. That's bottom line. Okay.
But I wonder if we should just say caregiver caregivers should pick up children versus must.
I think, can I just say it? We don't really define children. I mean, the age of majority.
Right.
Medicaid is 18. So then I see three categories of children, 11 and younger, 12, 13, 14, and then 15 through seven, you know, up to 18. So we haven't defined who children are. So does that mean that 17 year olds
Right.
have to, you know, if a if a staff member comes upon a 17 year old, and we haven't even touched on the question of how we determine a child's age, but they've got to be, they've got to be picked up by 30 minutes before closing time. I don't think we mean that, but that's, as I read it, that's what it would require. Caregivers must pick up children at least 30 minutes before closing time. If children means not 18, then it's kind of a broad brush.
Just just to return to the action item, are we comfortable with removing bullet number three?
Well, I think that we need to have some sort of a procedure in place for if we do have an unattended child under the age of 12.
Paragraph one.
Yeah, true. Good point. So.
Did I make a point?
Please.
I think the value of section three is is sort of like an alarm clock. It just reminds people that, you know, it's time to move along. You know, they can hit the snooze alarm, but I I think there's ambiguity in the word children. And I like Jennifer's idea of, you know, sort of age bracket concepts. If this is supposed to be read by the public, it sure reads like a legal document in people's eyes sort of glaze over. If we understand that children are, I guess, defined as 12 years and under, and 12 to 15 is 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 I don't know, young adult, and then 15 to 18 is a separate section, you know, whether it's the I think the spirit of number three is just to encourage people to sort of wrap things up, wind things down, connect with their ride, or just in the whole respect of safety and the buddy system and keeping an eye on everybody.
I wonder if we just would want to say something along the lines of caregivers must pick up their charges at least 30 minutes before closing time, because we do have folks with you know, other conditions or, you know, maybe intellectual disabilities who are not children, but they do have caretakers. And we certainly wouldn't want to strand those folks at closing time. And then Brandy, not to overcomplicate the typing, but on section two, the sentence that ends in subject to appropriate behavior, maybe we should add as defined in the library's code of conduct, because again, appropriate behavior is open to interpretation.
And I think I have an idea for a way to create both the definitions for children as well as meet Jennifer's interest in making it more clear and easy for people to to interpret this policy. So may I hazard to just put that in here real quick?
Please.
Okay. And it doesn't necessarily have to be right here. But I'll give it a try. Not perfect, obviously, but something along those lines. Is that what you have in mind?
I think it's fine. The related sentences, even in their absence, the caregiver is responsible for their children's behavior and safety. That's the last sentence of paragraph three. And so that implies, to me at least, that children 12 to 14, actually, children up to the age of 18 have to have a caregiver, maybe offsite. But that's the person who's responsible for the children's behavior and safety. So I don't have a problem leaving that in place. And I also noticed that in paragraph one, the new paragraph one, so paragraph B, the word caretaker, and also in C, it's used instead of caregiver, and the other places we've said caregiver.
So while she's doing that, is there anything that we see as a problem? If we are at closing time, tell a 13, 14 year old child to hang out in the streets and wait for their wait for, I don't know what?
Well, I don't I don't know if the library has any ability or right to detain them if they want to leave or they don't want to leave. I guess if they don't want to go outside until somebody picks them up, then they're like the library's problem. But if they go outside, you can't tell them, no, come back inside.
No, I was just, no, if 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 we're putting too fine a point on the age, either you're under 12 or you are under 18. At 18, I think we're considered an adult. And I could see the kids coming in from school or whatever, doing their homework or hanging out after school unattended, unsupervised, I should say. I just don't know if we are putting the library in any undue liability by being so specific about those ages.
I I guess the question is, would would library staff feel they needed to call the police if a 12 year old ride had not not shown up?
I think some staff would and some staff wouldn't, which gets to Ramona's point about equitable administration of policies.
How how often does this happen?
Not very.
Not very. Especially now in the age of cell phones.
But Jennifer, these point is when it does happen, she would like some sort of a policy to fall back on. I just don't want to trip over over ages because we don't, you know, we're going to, how old are you? And a 14 year old might look 18, or an 18 year old might look 50, you know, so I just don't want to put the library in any undue situations where we thought we were doing right, but we rely to.
Well, that that opens up another area. I'm hoping that whatever text we adopt as the policy, which I guess is outward facing, I mean, in theory, I suppose these policies will apply to staff members and are really rules that apply to staff members because it's telling them what to do. So there's that question. And I think another question would be, what right do library staff members have to demand that someone declare their age, you know, if a if the staff member approaches someone that he or she thinks is under 12, you know, whatever age the staff member thinks it is, and says, excuse me, how old are you? And the person says, I don't want to talk to you. Please go away. Leave me alone. I consider this harassment, abuse, and molestation. What's the staff member supposed to do then to carry out this policy?
I mean, if we get back to the how often does this happen, people do get asked their age at the library relatively frequently. And I've never known of an instance where that was the response.
Yeah, no, and I hope I hope no staff member ever hears that response. But it's kind of like if somebody lies or just doesn't say how old they are, what's a staff member to do? Since these are policies apparently mandatory and a and a staff member can be criticized for failure to follow the policy and then defend him or herself on grounds of impossibility. Now, having said all that, I mean, I'm I'm fine with the policy. I just I just am letting us know that, I mean, we this won't cover everything, nor will it be a perfect thing in every theoretical
Yeah. The policy is our good faith effort to adhere to the general statutes about children and, you know, unattended children in places of public accommodation.
One other thing that I in my my own redraft was that I I took what now is the introduction and put it into the policy and put the introduction above all that. And then and then change the change the opening sentence a little bit to say, not that the library adheres to the following policy, but that the following is the library policy. At least I hope I did that. Because I think we need to say, here's the policy, because you know, you can't adhere to something that isn't the policy. So it's just ought to be identified. It's what it is. This is the policy. We adhere to it. But this is what it is.
And as we're talking about this, I keep tripping over all of those different age requirements. And number two, the 12 to 14, if it's if it's not there, and only those 15 or older can be considered caregivers. How do people feel about that?
So I can, just to be certain that I understand correctly, you're proposing to remove them.
No, just be just to be the 12 to 14. They can be there, but can't be a caregiver, you know. So to me, I don't know if we need that sentence. You talked about the under 12 caregiver must be present, but then only those 15 and above can be caregivers. Yeah, think about that, because I'm not not sure if that's more confusing or not.
Or for me, if I were a parent looking at this, it would make more sense to have all of the ages listed, and there would be it's going to piss this gap if that wasn't there.
And and I just kind of Googled it real quick. I'm on the DCF website. And one of the guidelines for leaving your child alone. Um, and one of the guidelines for leaving your child alone is their age. Experts believe a child should be at least twelve before he is left alone and at least fifteen before he can care for a younger brother or sister. These are the minimum ages. Not every child is ready then.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it. I mean, I'm I'm okay with the language, but as we a- as we peel back this onion, you know, and and start seeing. Not so much what it does to the patrons who are coming in. But um. The burden that it puts on the staff to have to interpret and and do something with it.
I think it's it is good to spell it out, but I'm wondering and I'm wondering. So now we have number three. Uh, i- i- in what's currently number three, it does restate that they can use the library unattended. So I'm wondering. If there's some way. That. That that repetition does not need to be there. I haven't figured that out yet, but.
I think that um. The benefit of three being there is the in the event of their absence, a caregiver is is responsible for their children's behavior and safety, which would be awkward to incorporate above. Um, and make it more confusing. In my opinion.
So I think, Brandy, you had said something earlier. Um, about children in charges or maybe Ramona, I'm not sure. Um. If it's not your child. But someone that is under your your charge. This, does this include it or is this different? No.
As it stands right now, it's different. If we were to include charges, which is a good point and is something that we. I have seen increasingly in libraries, as I've been working in libraries, there are more and more adults that require a caregiver. Um, and so it's a point well taken that um, it would be nice for a policy to address that. If we go that route, we would also need to change the title of this policy. Um, and so it would it be.
Maybe another policy altogether.
Or maybe incorporating it into the code of conduct or something like that.
Okay.
Uh, one other place I think that just needs a touch. And that's in paragraph two. Uh, the second sense is if a child is found unsupervised, it probably should say if a child under twelve.
All right, so Brandy, can you scroll up to the top to see how we feel about what we have so far? Um. And the first paragraph, we just kind of introduce what we intend. Then um. Number one, um, we talk more about the ages and who can do what. Number two, um. Who's response, who who can supervise and then who's responsible for that? They can pick up their kid five minutes before the library closes or thirty minutes. We've taken that restriction out. Uh, we're not the parent. And then what's for informational purposes only? Uh, let's see.
The text of the statute.
Okay. So if we go kind of with what is here. So I'm going to ask the group, but by the way, um, is everyone from the group here? No, Tom and Greg and Jennifer's here. Are we missing someone?
Allison's here.
Allison's here.
Okay, okay. Um. So. Are we okay with what we've discussed now? Number one question. And the second question is, Brandy, do you think Jennifer and or the staff would be concerned or have any issues with what we've done? So first I'll go to the committee. Are we okay with what we have here?
Um, I'd like to touch one other thing. I'm sorry.
No, no.
In the um. Up top, under unattended children policy, that first introductory paragraph. It contains the sentence, this, I guess it's the third sentence. Keep in mind that a library is a public area. Um, I would just delete the words, keep in mind that. Uh, and substitute the word the.
Mm hmm. Okay.
Because it as phrased, it's a command and I'm trying to say, well, who's being commanded? To keep such a thing in mind, so uh, we better just to make it as an observation that the library is a public area. And because it's a public area, no, we can't control everything that goes on. Unattended children are. And well, that's it. Anyway, that's thank you.
All right, so um. Again, committee, are we okay with what has? Been. Suggested up to this point.
Can we just take a minute to read?
Sure. And do you need Brandy to kind of scroll a little bit?
I'm gonna get bigger too. Maybe in two, we should say, if there is no contact with the caregiver after thirty minutes. Library staff shall notify the police.
Either that or um. What about if there's no contact with the caregiver when the library is closing?
Well, I like this way because then it applies if um, we find somebody under twelve in the library during the course of the day and we're not able to establish contact with the caretaker. That way we wouldn't have to wait until closing to.
All right, all right, just asking the question.
Yeah.
Um, I would, I don't, I'm not troubled by this, but I do want to point it out. Uh, the second sentence in paragraph three. Even in their actions, the caregiver is responsible for their child's behavior and safety. That's that's redundant. We've already said that. I don't mind the redundancy, but it is.
It emphasizes that they're absent, so. But the sentence is a little um. I I get stuck by even in their their absence. I know it applies to the caregiver, but it it almost could also apply to children.
Oh, oh, you're right. Um, yeah, there's a the I if you want to cure that, you get rid of the pronoun and put even in the caregiver's absence. The caregiver is responsible. That makes it ultra clear. At the cost of a little bit of awkwardness, but I draft contracts and I don't mind repeating people's names to be clear.
Can I go back up top? There there are two things. Um, that catch my eye in in the third sentence when when we took out, keep in mind. I might like to suggest a however. However. And you don't have to use it, but however, the library is a public area and staff cannot guarantee the safety of unattended children. To me, that kind of makes that transition from the first two sentences. And then in the second paragraph, I I know Greg had suggested. I believe Greg had suggested. Taking out the adhere and just saying. The following is the policy. Uh, and I'm wondering where we stand on that.
I think I think it needs to be addressed. Um. Definitely. Let me get back to his.
I'll just say, I think it's also just, this is a sample of how we we think a policy is all done and then a month later, we're like, oh, no, let's let's redo it.
Well, I'd I'd probably put the 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 sentence is fine, obviously, I wrote it, but I just take it up top, um. Uh, maybe right under the title.
I'm confused. Do we have to say it's a policy? Because the title of it says unattended children policy.
Mm hmm. Yeah, can we just remove that paragraph entirely?
Also.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Any other comments? Allison, Tom?
No, I'm I'm okay with it.
So I asked the question again of the committee, are we okay with the um, changes um, that we put in here today? And the reason I'm asking is because the next question is going to be to Brandy. Do you think your staff is going to be okay with these?
I think unless, excuse me, unless somebody is really wedded to the thirty minutes before closing clause, which we've Mm hmm. Was a little too specific. Um. I don't see any, I don't foresee any huge problems, but I I'd be interested in hearing Brandy's take.
Um, so my feeling is that there probably will be some. Disagreement with that change. Um, so what I would propose is that I take the results of um, these edits to the head of the department again. Um, and then report back um, for the board meeting where this would be fully approved with her feedback. Um, so that the full board would have an opportunity to consider her feedback, but we could still move this forward for a vote as is from the governance committee.
I'm I'm fine with that, but I'm curious to know. Uh, how s- somebody, what somebody would think they could do under the thirty minutes till closing time policy that they couldn't do under the number paragraph one policy.
In in my experience at Russell Library. There's a desire to have procedure spelled out in policy. Um, and so I think while I agree that it is covered in other areas of this policy. People would feel more comfortable calling the police if it specifically said that they would call the police so that they could cite that in any communication with the parents thereafter. That essentially the policy dictated that they needed to call the police at at closing.
Got it. I I know that approach has under the name suspenders in a belt.
So we're keeping the thirty minutes, is that correct? No.
No, I don't. I don't think so. And I I can't guarantee that there will be um, disagreement on that front. I just um, feel like it's possible.
Good. Just a question, could we add if staff are concerned about the safety of a minor? Uh, they they may call the police. Uh, of an unattended minor, they may call the police, or is that just opens up again too much, too much of a can of worms?
I'm sorry to return to this to this issue, but there has been concern expressed about um, equity when it comes to the administration of this policy and that would leave um, a little more room for discretion than some folks would be comfortable with.
I think it also might be um. Not appropriately placed in a sort of outward facing policy. If that's something that you want staff to do. It probably shouldn't be here. It should be somewhere else. Directions towards staff.
Yeah, a procedure.
So, uh, Madam Chairman, in the effort to move this, I would. I think I'd, uh, it's already been moved and seconded. And I think we're ready to vote. There may be unanimous consent, but I'd like to add um to the motion to adopt this policy, just a direction to Brandy to please run it, run it by staff or the staff representative. Uh, before giving it to the uh, board. Uh, and and include whatever comments uh, the staff rep has about it. Uh, together with the text that we've approved.
Okay, so be it um. Um, the motion will be amended with all of those words you just said, great. Um, is there a second to that emotion that to that motion?
Do I just need to accept the friendly amendment?
Say that again, please, Jennifer.
Do I just need to accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, I I accept the friendly amendment.
Okay. Any more discussion about that? Then it's up for a vote.
If if I may, I'm sorry, a little.
That's okay.
Smidge of um, discussion. I just need clarity. Am I, it's okay to bring this to the head of the department? And this need not necessarily be shared with the entire staff?
My intention was to to do whatever you think is proven.
You know how your staff is going to respond if, you know, um, and the thing is, we do want this to be approved in a couple of weeks. And I don't know what the appetite is to try to approve things via email. I don't know if this group has done those things or not. No, we haven't. Okay.
No, you have to do it in an open meeting.
Okay.
I see that, um, Amy, is it Amy Swillock was made a comment. Is that is she? Would she be someone who would want to see this as well, or was that just a friendly question?
I do think it was a friendly question. Um, and in that case, if we were to share it with our leader to leadership team, she would be included.
Is that something that could easily be done and get feedback from?
Yes.
That sounds good to me.
Okay. So all those in favor of Brandy taking this to um, the leadership team and I guess the head of uh, the children's department, say I.
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 Thank you, because I don't see everyone's face, so I can't see waving of the hands. Um, opposed? Abstain. Okay. We will keep our fingers crossed and try to get this approved by the by the bigger board. Um, in a couple of weeks. Thank you, guys. This was a very, very good discussion. I I liked it a lot. Um, we really don't have any new business. Um, I did put things on to discuss at the next agenda. And if those stay from the next agenda, does that go under new business? Those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and and we missing anything or should anything change under what we that item should be placed on the next agenda? Okay. Any announcements? Open forum. I um, typically am not in town during Labor Day week. So that kind of puts a hamper on me conducting a September meeting. However, if we have a quorum. Um, someone else is perfectly capable of running the meeting. So give me your thoughts on that. If are we will, will we have a forum here on September 7? That means I need to hear some voices saying yes.
I'd be available, I'd be available, but I can't tell you that there'll be a quorum because that depends on people besides me.
Right. So we got one.
Either date is OK with me.
OK, we got two.
I I should be here either date.
OK, so we do have a forum. Tom, are you going to be around? He might be on mute.
He's very shy.
Yes.
OK, thank you.
Following the guidelines.
All right. So I'm going to suggest someone besides Jennifer because that poor woman has has to take all of these words and make sense out of them in. In in the minutes, is there a volunteer to conduct the September 7? Meeting.
I I think, are we all OK also with moving it, though, and so that you can participate? Is the is the regular board meeting the 20th or?
In September, regular board meeting is the.
I think it would be good to have as many of us here as possible.
Well, you're only missing one and everyone else is here and. Thank you. If the 14th works, then we can move it to the 14th.
Were you trying to get out of a meeting?
Well, you know, I was just saying, just testing the waters. I'll test them again next year, but that's OK. We test.
Get shot.
OK, so the meeting is going to be. On the 14th. And. Anything for executive session? I didn't see anything that was important for that. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just had a, I just had a quick question, if possible. It doesn't, quick questions don't necessarily mandate quick answers. And quick, simple questions may. Get answers not today, but later. I'm just wondering. Like a 24 hour, seven day a week gymnasium. That has a key card that you swipe when you're a member and that unlocks the door. I was just curious. If a library card would ever become a digital device that gives you access into the library, which has a secure front door.
You know, I was going to talk a little bit about that, Tom. I didn't know whether to do it in executive session or after the meeting ended.
Well, you can move it as you wish. It's just a query that has an extensive answer to a quick caring question.
OK.
A quick answer to it is that academic libraries have been doing that for some time. Our building certainly is not equipped for that kind of technological capabilities. But I've also dreamt of them being you, it being possible to use them to, say, park at meters. Across the street from the library, but there there's a technology infrastructure underlying that that we just don't have in this location.
It up as a security item or? You know, in light of recent events or?
Well, just a question in relation to, I guess, what we do with public schools. Or public courthouses. I'm just not certain whether there's any. Similar need or qualification for our type of front door. And I just know that. To go to it, you know, again. Your fitness gym and get in with your little RFID card. I just didn't know if that also gives patrons a sense of. Comfort that or extra comfort that they've entered a place where they've been qualified to get into with their electronic library card.
It'd be an interesting discussion to have, you know, maybe at a maybe at a board retreat. Ball or yeah.
Because and I totally agree. And I I because of recent events, as you brought up, Ramona. I I didn't know if the library had anything with active shooter. I know we used to have something with open carry, but. That's, you know, now it seems to be an issue.
We have done training in the past. Granted, it was before the pandemic. And we had folks from emergency management come and train the staff in how to respond to an active threat situation at the library. But we, you know, that said, we're back in person. Obviously, we have been for a while and we have lots of new staff members. So it's it's time to make sure. I wish we didn't have to, but it's time to make sure we all get. Refresher training or or for those who maybe haven't had the training before, training for the first time, so.
And Tom's right, you know, we want people who are legitimate people who should be able to get into the library. But we also want the people who are in there to. In the olden days, you just felt safe. And so we want to maintain that as much as we can.
Public libraries do tend to get. Fairly, you know, large. Population of transient folks who don't necessarily reside in your town. You know, when you're in a, I know when I'm in a place that is not Middletown depend, you know. It could be anywhere. I, you know, I I'm a library tourist, and so I want to go and visit libraries or, you know, sometimes people just want to use the bathroom. Or. You know, use a computer, check their email. Sit for a little while. I can see that, you know, that would be a friction point or a barrier to use of our library, but I certainly do understand the times we're in now as well, so.
Well, you know, that it is a concern, and I think as employees, you. Should know that the board is concerned about that for you guys.
It just potentially, it doesn't have to happen, but just imagine. That there's a two-stage entrance to this public building and inside the front door, which is open. The first stage has the the toilet facilities and the ability for someone to make a request. The person traveling through from Maine that wants to check on an ancestor and that's buried in Middletown. Is someone that's from out of the country, that they can be sort of vetted or screened to then. Get through that next door that your RFID card would let you through if you're a regular patron. But if you've been cleared with a guest pass, maybe someone's seen a driver's license or something, or just. Seen that they are of somewhat right mind. They are allowed to enter after the clearing through, you know, entrance section one, if you will. Or the greeting area that also has. Facilities that someone needs to be comforted.
It's a good point. Good, good, good suggestion.
And I feel like this is something we could talk about for hours, right?
Oh, yes, we could.
Just wanted to get the post-it note up on the wall.
No, I understand. Certainly.
We know you do.
Yeah.
Would anyone like to motion to adjourn? Oh, good. Okay, we'll stay here. Oh, OK. Yes, let's get out of here. OK, do I have a second?
I'll I'll.
OK, thank you, Tom. All right, the meeting is ending at 6:04 PM.